Okay, I welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the Trumbull Housing Authority, December 10th, and I'd ask you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Barbara, could you do a roll call, please?
Kathy McGannon.
Here.
Laurel Anderson.
Here.
Maureen Bova.
Here.
Sarah Fleeger. Charlene Peterson. Here.
I am going to ask that we skip right down to the policies that we need to review, the tenant selection plan and the congregate lease, because we have Karen with us, and I don't want her to have to sit through the whole meeting. And anybody who has questions, we can do that first. So I will entertain a motion to take the tenant selection plan and the congregate lease out of order, please.
So moved Laurel.
Seconded Charlene.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we will start with the tenant selection plan. Karen, do you have any things you want to bring to our attention before anybody starts asking questions?
No, just to say generally, went through with an eye toward updating any statutory regulatory changes aware of, so hopefully it's updated.
Now, I had one that was dated from January, so Dawn, just refresh my memory. We had started this at the beginning of the year?
Yes.
Yes, it was the beginning of the year.
Okay, so this is a final draft that you want us to vote on this evening?
Yeah, to accept the first reading, and then we'll make a copy and send it to the congregate. They'll have 30 days to look it over. We'll bring it back with any suggestions between the attorney and the board members or the commissioners, and then, and then take any comments from our tenants. And then after that, it'll come back for a second reading. So my... Go ahead.
The one from January, we didn't do a approval of a first reading.
No, and the dates on these tenant selection plans are a little off. I should have corrected it for December 9th was the last one that I just sent out. So that's my, my mistake on that one, I apologize.
No, that's okay.
Just really quickly Kathy, but I do know that our tenant selection plan for Stern Village was approved to end January for Village though.
Yeah.
For the Villa, okay.
Yes, so there are, so if you have one that's printed January 2024, that may be Village. If you have one printed that...
It is, it is.
Yeah, yeah, so the one that's printed 12/9/2024, which we have today, that's for congregate.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Because I remember the approval date was 1/23/2024, but for Stern.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so then this is for the congregate. Does anyone have questions for Karen on anything in this tenant selection plan for the congregate? I'm looking to see if I marked anything, I'm sorry.
Okay, on page three, under section number two, under Stern Village, I just need to add in disabled for people 18 or older should be added in there. Yeah, for Stern Village. Henry Stern Center Congregate has its own group and all its own regulations. So there's two separate meanings, one for Stern Village and one for the Henry Stern Congregate. So that should be noted, that 18 should be put in there.
Okay, Stern Village.
Under Stern Village, yeah, I don't know why it's not put in there, but...
Okay, so you wanted to say and/or disabled persons 18 or older?
That's correct. Okay? That's the stipulation for Stern.
And that is never in, in the congregate? We don't house any disabled?
No, 62 years or older only.
Okay.
And not disabled.
Distance, which would be disabled.
Right.
It's not just the ADL.
Right.
Okay, so that, that, there's nothing that needs with that?
No. And then the only other one that I had was on page 13 of 27. Under 13, the last sentence in report changes and family circumstances, I took out changes must be submitted in writing. Right now, when we have somebody call to check on their waitlist, we always verify current address, current phone numbers. So we're going to take out that the changes must be submitted in writing, because we're pretty adamant about how we verify everything. And it has in other parts here that it's up to the tenant to get back to us and make any corrections or update us, so that we get the most current information. But anytime they call, we always verify phone numbers and addresses to make sure that we're up to date on everything.
Okay, let me make sure I'm where I need to be here.
Sure.
Did you say page?
Page 13 of 27.
Okay.
Under number 13, report, reporting changes in family circumstances, the last sentence in that first paragraph.
Okay.
Okay. Other than that, I was okay with everything else in here. But if anybody has any other questions?
Yeah. Someone have a question?
Yeah, I have a question. My first question, it would give out information to come to Stern Village, 55 or older and disabled. I never recall ever seeing anything 18. However, having said that, I did see some people in here younger than 55.
Yeah.
So it hasn't always been 18, it was just never in the thing. Okay, that's all I want to know. So it is 18.
Yeah.
Okay, so just so I'm clear, you would like us to approve this as a first reading?
That's correct, yes, please.
So could I have someone make a motion to approve a first reading of the congregate tenant selection plan?
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of the tenant selection plan for the congregate.
Thank you, Maureen, may I have a second?
Charlene seconds.
Charlene seconds. Any discussion on the motion, are we, we good to go? All right, can I take it by unanimous consent? Will you approve the first reading?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. All right, so then we need to look at the congregate lease document. And is this the same, Dawn? Is this a first reading and it goes, this lease goes to the congregate?
Yes, please.
Karen, anything in here that we need to be aware of?
No. Alert a call to your attention.
I know that Paulette had a, had a question on...
Page three.
Three of 18.
Yep.
Number six, letter D.
D. Yes, the word problem, I prefer to use the word impairment. And it says with one daily activity, I don't think, if they should be reading this, they don't know what that means. So it should say with one activities daily of life, ADLs. And it just explain what it, what you mean by ADLs of impairment.
Okay. Isn't, okay, I thought you said B, okay, 62 years or old with an impairment? Back the language we used over here in tenant selection.
Yes, that's correct, yes.
So I went into HUD, and if you want a further explanation, it could say tenants must meet certain eligibility requirements, 62 years or older, with an impairment with one essential activity of daily living, such as feeding, bathing, grooming, temporary or periodic difficulty dressing or transferring. That's out of HUD. So taken right out of the congregate, we could substitute that wording if you're more comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay, that's exactly the language that we have over here, minus the transferring. So I'll just add that in. Both places.
With an impairment, with one essential daily activity, such as, or by bathing, grooming.
Temporary or periodic difficulty...
Can I just ask, did I print off the right document with the comments in the, in the border? In the, on the, down the side?
Yeah.
Okay, so I didn't, okay.
So I don't think that the congregate definition with the temporary or periodic difficulties applies. So I'm going to leave out the temporary or periodic and just the, it one essential daily activity.
Okay.
Okay, the only other thing that came up just recently is on page four of 18, under number eight, vacating premises and dwelling unit. We had somebody here who came in and verbally said that they wanted to leave without set, signing a notice to vacate.
Yep.
So thought maybe under vacating premises and dwelling unit, if Karen agrees, it says you must notify THA at least 30 days in advance. And I have in here, we can put by written notification or by notice of vacate from tenant with a date and time submitted of your intention to vacate the dwelling. This way, whether they've written a letter themselves and given it to us, or they've signed a notice to vacate, that, will that cover us Karen either way? If we stamp it and they've signed a notice to vacate in their own words?
Yeah, because they were trying to take advantage of the abandonment statute, don't have to go through summary process. And in order for that, it's like a two of four things they have to do. So they have to sign something and remove substantially possessions, and then you can go in without doing summary process.
Karen, I don't know if I'm the only one, but I'm getting like every third word.
Yeah, yeah, we all are.
Okay.
Sorry.
Let me just move a little bit.
I was gonna say that Karen, every time you come closer, I can hear, but if you move far away, then I can't hear.
When you turn and move, yeah.
Hey, right here, it's probably my speaker on my old phone. Okay. So yeah, you're trying to take advantage of the abandonment procedure and connect so that you don't have to do summary process. And what you need is like two of four things. Either they don't pay rent for two months, or they turn in the keys, or they sign something about their intent to leave, or they remove substantially all of their possessions, and you need some combination of those four things. So this is basically just trying to say, tell us you're leaving, take your stuff, and don't make us go through summary process.
All right, anything else that...
The only other thing that came up is under number nine, same page, four of 18, under nine, move in, move out inspections. And I don't know if this will help or hinder, but on the second paragraph that begins with when you move out of the unit. And at the end, I don't know if we want to add, all items must be removed at termination date of lease to avoid extra charges. Right now, we're not specific that they have to remove everything out of the unit. Don't know if we want to make that clear to them, because we're incurring more expenses because they are not emptying the units.
Yes, I, I think that even for the village and for the congregate, they should remove everything out of the unit. So it'd be a clear canvas for the maintenance guys to clean. When they have furniture, bulky furniture, tables, it makes it difficult. Then Trumbull Housing is going to be responsible to dispose of furniture, and, and that's going to be with us, you know, we have to pay for that, because we don't know how much stuff they're going to leave in the dumpster that the guys got to put in the dumpster, and it costs $225 to unload that dumpster. So they have to take everything out of their unit, everything, clean ca- canvas, clean.
What was the wording, Dawn?
I have, all items must be removed at termination date of lease to avoid extra charges. If that's okay.
Yeah, I think that, that's fine. And then we just have to take a look at if you have a schedule of charges, which makes sure that that's on there too, just to be consistent.
Do we charge now if they leave stuff?
No.
No, so do we have a...
With the policy in the works.
Now that you'll get them.
Yeah, that's just adopt as rules, reasonable rules and regulations, and you just kind of things that we, we might charge you for. You know, there's a statute about late fees, so that's set in stone as to what you can charge. And like lockout charges and all that stuff.
So can it be a liberal, instead of trying to get pricing for every item or every circumstance, can we do something as...
$50 fee.
Yeah, instead of like nickel and diming or putting $50, can we put a reasonable fee for labor and cost of goods? Like, it's fluctuating, right? We have no way to control that, but I'd like to be as close as possible. We're not trying to overcharge, but to cover our expenses, and that's all. So can a maintenance fee be that liberal?
Yeah, definitely, the actual cost of removing whatever you leave behind is going to be deducted from your security deposit. And then we reserve the right to try to, you know, bring an action to collect that from you in small claims or whatever.
Okay.
Yeah, congregate does not have a security deposit.
Right.
So it would really just trying to be collecting charges if there was a fee afterwards, which we may or may not be able to do. But at least we can give it a try and have it in policy, or at least in writing for the tenants when they move in or move out, that they're aware of the policy.
Are you not allowed to have a security deposit?
We could, if they so thought that was affordable for some of these people, but for a lot of the congregate people, it's a struggle to get whatever we're getting from them, as is. So that would be, both the commissioners could decide that they'd like to do that in the ED together, or one or the other. But at the present time, we do not have a deposit for, only on Stern Village, we do have a deposit, first month run.
Well, I'm thinking, you know, you leave a hospital bed in the room, or you leave three cereal boxes in the room. You know, you've got, you, you can't charge the same thing. So without, you know.
Right.
Something reasonable.
And reasonable cost of what it costs us to get it removed. If it's a dumpster worth of things, then we should be able to charge them for, you know, the cost of that dumpster.
It probably won't collect.
I know, yeah.
Well, some teeth, so if already don't have a security deposit, that, that, that's what I was thinking, is even, it, it, it might be served in some deterrent role to say, I want my security deposit in the apartment. That's how it always worked with me in apartments. So that's why I was thinking that, but I understand what you're saying. It's just hard enough for them to even pay the rent, they're on fixed incomes or...
But it, it could serve notice to the family, that either you get all your person's stuff out, or we're going to come after you for some disposal charges.
Yeah.
Maybe that's, you know, most of the people who leave the congregate either leave because they are no longer, or they've gone off to a nursing home where they've got first dibs on their money.
And Karen, would it be possible to offer them a disposal, disposal package? Like if they just wanted to leave everything, and we take the cost of hiring like junk luggers or something like that? And if they sign a contract to do that with us and they cover the cost? Or can we do something like that, or is that too cumbersome for us to kind of get involved in?
If I, not being the middle person, because you probably, it would be hard to collect from them, first of all. So, you know, junk luggers would make, should, and we would want them to make them pay upfront. They're probably not going to be able to afford that. And you wouldn't want to be stuck with the junk luggers bill if you could do it cheaper with your own maintenance people. So I think it's better to just, you know, if the family, if there's some teeth in there, then maybe the family would hire junk luggers to deal with it, so they don't have to deal with it. But I wouldn't want to be the middle person there.
Yeah.
That's what we've been trying to do, is just give them a, they left some coupons for people, and we haven't, give them the coupon and tell them to contact them and do it themselves.
Yeah.
Okay. Then I came up with, was on page, I'm sorry, go ahead Kathy.
No, 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 go ahead.
On page seven of 18, number 10 or X, refrain from placing signs of any type about the dwelling. We have people put up flags, we have people put up lights, we have people put up like, trust in God, things like that. Yeah. Do we need to be any more specific about signs being put out? I mean, because some of the flags, and they post them in areas, not in their area, but on, you know, where the garbage is. So they're posting them in other areas, not just on their own unit.
Clearly I'm on the wrong page, what page should you say?
Seven, of 18, seven, number X.
Yeah, I would just say maybe refrain from placing signs of any type outside the dwelling or in common spaces.
Okay, thank you.
I guess we can't stop with those inside their windows.
No.
Some of them have Christmas lights up now, so that's okay. No. Ooh, they have lights around their doors. They're electric though.
Yeah, hopefully.
As lenient as possible, but it does offend some, we get some others. So I just try to keep an eye on things like that. But that's the only other thing that came up recently. All these are recent things that have come up.
Yeah.
We better introduce.
Yeah.
We'll always get more, but, yeah. But thank you Karen for all your help on getting this together.
My pleasure, thank you.
Questions?
Justies, have any questions? On it? Dawn, you had nothing more to?
I do not, no, but I'm happy to go over anything else. If anybody has anything else they'd like to discuss.
Dawn, there were actually a couple of things in the minutes the last time. I think most of it is stuff that you actually have, or, oh no, the, you had discussed the master list that you guys are going to be working on, and that it should be ready the beginning of December. You were, I guess you guys are working on putting together a spreadsheet or something, or...
The fees.
What's that?
The fees?
No. For each unit, what, how old it is, when it was rehabbed, if it wasn't rehabbed, how, whatever.
Yeah, we're, we're going, I, I don't mean to stop, but if, do we need Karen for anything else?
I don't, I don't think so, when you need an approval of a first reading of the lease.
Yes, please.
So if someone make a motion to approve the first reading of the Henry Stern dwelling lease?
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of the dwelling lease.
Thank you, Maureen. Second.
Charlene will second.
Second, all right. Anybody have any more questions on it? We take it by unanimous consent? Okay. Okay, Karen, thank you, feel better? Thank you for your work on this.
Thank you Karen, have a good evening, happy holidays.
Nice seeing you.
You too.
Karen. Bye bye.
Bye bye.
Okay, so we'll go back to the top of our, we have approval of October 29th minutes. Are these the ones you were referencing? Laurel?
Yes, I can wait till Dawn does, I'm sorry, I preempted, I jumped far ahead.
That's okay.
I make a motion to accept the minutes of October 29th as, as...
I have a second.
You'll accept the minutes of October 29th meeting?
Maureen seconded, any changes or additions or deletions? Okay, unanimous consent? Thank you. All right, we'll move to the special meeting of the November 25th. Can I have a motion to approve?
By Charlene.
Moved by Charlene, second Sarah, thank you. All right. Any additions or deletions or corrections? All right, I'll take it by unanimous consent unless somebody objects. Okay, thank you. All right, next is our meeting dates for 2025.
I've already put them in my calendar.
Well, can we talk about June 24th, 2025? Because that will be my 70th birthday. Where I want to spend it.
Instead of a meeting, let's have a party.
Could we maybe do Wednesday, the 25th instead? Does that throw everybody off?
No, sounds good.
For your birthday Kathy, anything?
I know. And I promise I won't be hungover on my iced tea. All right, so June 25th. All right, can I have a motion to approve these dates? Oh, one other, I'm sorry, September 23rd is Rosh Hashanah. And the town never schedules a meeting on those holidays, so...
24th?
I don't know, I gotta look at September week before. And the week before maybe?
Here, 16?
No, the 20, the 23rd is Rosh Hashanah starts on the 22nd.
It starts on the 22nd, okay.
So it's over by sundown on the 23rd?
Good afternoon, so you should take it on. Sure.
All right, so do you, do you want to do the 24th, or do you want to go back a week? What's better for people? I know some of you set those Tuesday, you know, aside, but Wednesday, or we could do Wednesday, or we could go the week before.
This far out, I don't have anything, so...
When you say it's good.
All right. 24th.
24th.
Okay.
Okay.
Now I can make a motion to approve the dates as amended?
Thank you, may I have a second on the approval?
Charlene seconds.
Charlene seconds, all right. Unanimous consent to our dates, you know they're going to change, so...
Yeah.
But for now, they're good.
I will send them off to be put on the, on the website. Okay, so we've gotten through those, through those. Bill, do we have anybody on who might want to make public comment?
There's a member of the public, so if the member of the public would like to speak at this time, please hit the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen or press star nine on your phone. And it does not appear that anyone wishes to make a comment.
Okay, so I will close, that's public comment session. Okay, Director of Finance, do we have a report?
No. So we've had our audit, December 5th, Michelle was here, Jackie, myself, Paulette, and Paul from Markham was here to finish our audit. It looks like everything was good. We were able to get him all the information, so that should be on time. And it looked pretty good. He said that he didn't find anything outstanding, is that correct, Paulette?
That's correct.
Thing looked good. We all worked together to get him all the information he needed, so I think it went well, and we haven't heard anything, so that's a good sign.
Appreciate it, and that's a good sign, yes.
Yes, yeah. Excellent.
And Michelle from Jason's firm was wonderful as usual. She came down specifically on that day to make sure she was here in case there were any problems, so that was really good.
Dawn, is your sense they'll have it done for the, for when? Who, who usually gets it, mentor or something? The audit? The audit?
No.
Somebody at the state gets the audit and sometimes we've been late. Are we thinking we're going to be on time?
Yes, uh, mentor was the one, but now it's Mr. Baptiste.
Yeah, we should be on time. Um, if there is a question that we need an extension, we'll let the state know that we need extension, but I think we're looking like we'll be on time. And there shouldn't be any problems. He didn't say, see anything that was a problem. We weren't alerted to anything. So he was pretty happy with everything and the way it went when he left. So he came about eight thirty, left at three thirty. So I think, yeah, I think we are in very good shape to get it done.
Good, we appreciate all of your efforts.
Yeah, everybody helped, it was good.
Keep everything moving, okay.
Um, and as you saw tonight, we reviewed and passed for the first reading for the tenant selection plan and lease for the congregate. That's taken us some time. We are now working on getting a uniform application for, uh, the congregate. We had a couple and we needed to tweak it a little bit, so that should be doing by next month.
Yeah.
I think once we close everything out for this year. Um, and our, uh, spreadsheet for the board for what's being completed, we're doing a, uh, review of our, what is it, inspections?
Inspections, yeah.
So Jackie has a list of everybody who has a hood, everybody who needs, like little things done, so I, I can't complete it until I know what a work order is or where we are. So I'm hoping by the beginning of the year, I will have something to send to everybody. We're still working on a couple of rehabs. We have a couple of, uh, units that they just finished, so we're moving along in the right direction. Um, and we're still getting supplies for, for some of the older apartments. People seem to be happy when we replace something that hasn't been replaced in twenty years. Um, Maureen included.
Yep.
So, um, and when we've been revamping, homes at the congregate, if we see something that it would be better suited for the village and then something from, the village that could go to the congregate to make it a better fit. Uh, the maintenance has been on top of that as well. We're really trying to maximize our supplies. Um, we did get some new refrigerators, uh, that was on sale for under four hundred dollars for each refrigerator. So, um, everybody's working together to make sure we're trying to keep the budget and, you know, get as many new supplies. And as we need them, we have a few on hand, so that seems to be going well. Um, but the guys are doing a great job renovating the apartments as we go. Uh, now it's just getting, uh, all our lists done and getting that spreadsheet done, so we can have a little bit better idea on what's going where. So I guess there hasn't been anything in the past, right, Paulette, about?
No, nothing in the past.
So trying to pull everything is, is a little bit of a chore, but we, we are getting, making some headway, especially now looking at the, um, inspections.
Takes time.
Is that it?
Yes, unless there's other questions or, um, and I will redo that, uh, maintenance charge policy. If we can have it a little more flexible and a little less intense on, uh, what Paulette and I had looked at prior to this. I'm going to revamp it and we'll probably get that to you for the January meeting, because that, and we're working on the employee handbook as well.
Right.
Oh, um, we're trying to get that. Our last one was from two thousand fourteen.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Anne with the congregate.
Yep, uh, good evening everyone. Our current occupancy percentage is eighty eight point, eighty eight percent. Our vacancy rate is eleven point eleven percent. We have four empty units, two D, two M, two T, and one P. Maintenance has been working hard on the rehab of these apartments and they're coming out beautifully. The lease signing for one P is scheduled for the thirteenth and we are scheduling interviews for the other three units. We are anticipating another vacancy this month and one after that, there are a couple of, uh, one of those health problems has to go somewhere in the other facility. And there's another gentleman that's moving, hopefully to be with his brother in the south. Our waitlist is currently at thirty one, but we have several additional applications to review and put on the waitlist. Uh, Dawn Cantafio and I have selected paintings for the foyer, the lobby and the dining hall, and look forward to hanging them this month. Eventually, we hope to have paintings in the long hallways. We are also looking for decorative objects for the lobby such as artificial plants and perhaps a more attractive, small set of the table and two chairs, and maybe in the spring spruce up the front porch. Uh, since the last meeting, we provide the following services to the tenants. Transportation to the polls, COVID and flu shots, room inspections, winterization of rooms. Our November activities, the highlight was definitely the Knights of Columbus pre Thanksgiving dinner Saturday, November twenty third, in the blackout, very exciting.
Yes.
We had no power. One by one, like half of a room, like someone's, uh, where, someone's apartment, was lit and the other half wasn't, and within forty five minutes, then that was all dark and then it would like go down the hall. However, the, the dining room and lobby were all lit, all hallways were lit.
Yep, yep.
Uh, fourteen congregants, congregants, eight in the dining hall, six weren't able physically to come to the dining hall, so meals were delivered in the dark to their rooms. Four, uh, tenants were away with family or in medical facilities. Eight preferred to pick up a meal, although some changed their mind when their power went out in their rooms, so.
Got more down.
But due to the power outage, um, the, those who couldn't make it down, well, um, were delivered, meals were delivered to them, so they didn't have to go in the dark. For those tenants who were in the rooms, uh, and could not come down, uh, we guided the Knights of Columbus up to the, um, the room. Uh, the food was incredible and was thoroughly enjoyed by all. The Knights of Columbus were so nice and helpful and organized and just tactful people.
And I have something to add to that. Let me tell you, Anne did a fantastic job. She's the first congregate manager that has been at that dinner since I've been here and I've been to about six of them. They loved her, John the Grand Knight, his wife, remember, these are volunteers that we don't see unless once a year or a year. She made sure she introduced herself. They were happy to see her. They know now who the manager of the congregate is. I personally got compliments from the Grand Knight and some of the volunteers that she led. She was so helpful to lead them to the rooms. There have been in the past, they just say, oh, that's second floor. They don't tell them how to get to the second floor. They didn't tell them where the stairwell were. Uh, you have to wait for the elevator. Let me tell you, just as somebody that's been there for the past five or six dinners, she did a fantastic job and she was praised by them. So I think you all deserve to know that this is what she did.
Thank you, Anne. Thank you.
Uh, the food was great, um, thoroughly enjoyed by all, even the people who, you know, were going to cook something for themselves or like, this is really, this is better. And the Knights of Columbus were just great. Um, uh, speaking of turkeys, on November twenty fifth, Jill Ruggerio, donated five turkeys, five bags of fixings. We announced the date in time for the raffle and those who won were very pleased and they tell me they still have them in the freezer for Christmas. Uh, this month, our activities include Jill Ruggerio coming back and, um, raffling off five spiral hams and five bags of fixings. A date yet to be met. Next week, uh, Nico Padilla of Investigative Consultant will be providing a holiday luncheon for the tenants on December eighteenth. And so far, we have about seventeen people who've signed up. Um, on December twelfth, the residents are invited to make gingerbread houses with me in the dining hall after their lunch. Not the cake and stuff, it's like cardboard.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because the cake would be bad, yeah. Uh, the December residence meeting will be held on the twentieth. This week, Barnum Engineered Systems will begin the project of updating the security alarms throughout the building. I think it will be done in carefully organized phases, so as not to interfere with the tenants' needs and comfort. Robo calls will be routinely, I just went to the dentist, routinely set out, sent out to the tenants, advised of the progress and what to expect next. And they, um, are not coming in tomorrow, they're coming in Thursday and then continuing. Uh, Barnum estimates completion in mid-January and right before they're done, they're going to go into all the rooms and make sure everything's connected.
Any questions for Anne? Anne, thank you. It sounds like things are going much better at the congregation.
I don't know what it was like before, so.
No, you don't, no you don't.
Thank you.
Okay, um, where's my resume? There you are, Lisa.
Yes, good evening everyone. Um, first of all, um, on November sixth, we had Cooking for One with Dawn. Um, and Dawn did an excellent job. It was a huge success. Participation, um, residents received a demonstration of cooking chili for one. They had a taste testing at the end and they received a copy of the recipe also. So it went over really nicely, so, um, I'd like to, um, try to see if I can, someone else to do it if Dawn can't do it again, but the residents really appreciated it and enjoyed it.
I can, if I can just say, um, one of the tenants actually helped cook with me. He was a chef, so he put his spin on the way, uh, how to make this chili I had a recipe for. And he was talking with the tenants and handed out the, the chili that we just made and I made cornbread. So it really was a good turnout. I think we had about twelve to fifteen people, would you say?
And then Watkins.
And then Watkins, who came in, all they wanted to do was eat and then leave, so. But that was okay, but they really did seem to do, enjoy it. So Lisa was, uh, a good sport at, at setting that up. And they have asked if we would do it again and I said sure. So it was a good program. Thank you, Lisa.
The cornbread was delicious, I must say so myself. Okay, December seventh, um, there was a Medicare update with Ed Hendrick. And, um, it was well attended also. Residents received the updated information regarding Medicare Advantage plans as well as the plans that are no longer being offered in Connecticut. So that was, uh, well attended, a lot of good information. Um, some residents made appointments, um, for one-on-one assistance, which was really great. Um, the mobile food pantry was held on November fourteenth. Um, there were forty eight in total, twenty eight in person and twenty deliveries. Um, the number of residents have reduced, um, because of the decline in the variety of fruits and vegetables according to the residents. And this is a result of the dire need for food throughout the state. So, um, I did talk to FS, Jewish Family Services. And of course, you know, the amount of fruits and vegetables that are donated from, from the Connecticut Food Bank, they have decreased. So Jewish Family Services can only distribute what's donated to them. Uh, but the, um, the people that do come to the mobile pantry are very appreciative of it. You know, and, you know, it's going to keep going forwards because, you know, people are such and such dying into food now because of the, so we're going to continue on. Uh, the next time the food pantry be there is this Thursday, December twelfth. Um, oh, on December, uh, November ninth, it was also a pre Thanksgiving dinner from St. Teresa's Church that was well attended. It was really nice. Uh, the, uh, residents really enjoyed that. Um, it was a pre Thanksgiving lunch and learn that was scheduled for November twenty second, but it was canceled by caring offices. So, um, I'm going to reach out to them to see if they could come at another time. And right now, I'm currently seeing residents and helping them with paperwork and explaining a lot of letters that they're getting from the Department of Social Services and other entities and giving direction, including filling out appeals for them, um, that go to DSS for, um, incorrect information, um, giving them SNAP benefits that are less than what we all feel they getting and a lot of them are getting increased as a result of that. So I'll continue to do that as people need the assistance, which is all year long. Um, I'm also conducting benefit and assessment, um, ADL assessments with residents to find out if they're currently on and to see if there are other benefits or programs that they may be entitled to, but not be aware of. Um, and this is in an effort to improve their finances, their socialization and improve their quality of life. Um, I'm also inviting their caregivers when necessary to come, their family members, to come to the actual assessment. Uh, because their residents do not come out of their homes and they may be declining in their ADLs but not actually voicing that and from them being secluded in their, they may need in-home services, so this is a way to actually get to them. And if they can't come to the office, I'm going to do part of it by phone and then do a formal visit to their apartment. And, you know, look, see, you know, what is going on and see what ways that we can help them, whether it be in-home services, you know, hoarding situations, um, lack of food, you know, all kinds of things. There could be, you know, several different, um, things that we can help them with. So, um, that's what I'm working on now. And it takes approximately hour and a half or so to do one person, um, that's down, what I've, I've experienced. I'm going to be working that because, you know, there's several people that don't come to the community room for events and things of that sort. So I started with the people that have been living there the longest and then I'm going to work my way up. And then also when new residents come on, after they sign their lease, they're going to have an appointment made so that they can come and do a benefit screening and assessment and everything, so that we know where they are with their ADLs, whether they're on SNAP, whether on Medicare Savings Program, things of that sort, so that we can look and see if there's other benefits that they could qualify for right at that time and then actually do it again the following year. Um, and, um, so that we can have an ongoing process, so that we can look at people to see. These are. And it's all, it's voluntary. A person can, um, decide that they don't want to have the assessment done, you know, because it is independent living. And if they don't want it, then, you know, we won't, you know, press it, but I think it's important um, that we know what's going on and how we can help them if in fact we. Um, I'm currently looking for presentations for February, February and March. I wanted to, um, do one on depression during the winter. Um, also in-home services and grants that are available to people, because some people don't qualify for in-home services through Medicaid, but there are grants if they're a caregiver or if they have a diagnosis of Alzheimer's or dementia, where they can actually get services in place, even for a temporary period of time. Um, and also I wanted to do a presentation on Alzheimer's and dementia, the signs and symptoms. So I'm trying to find present, um, do some of these presentations. And that's my report.
Thank you.
Questions?
I do think there's a lot of people who don't have any idea how to navigate the services that are out there or where to start. So I do think it's so important to, to meet with them and go through what they're getting and, you know, and find people, the more services we give them, the better their quality of life. So I appreciate you looking after them that way. Thank you.
Or do the actual referral.
Yeah.
Medicaid Home Care Program, fax it to the Hartford office and up to find out if they have an appointment for their initial. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Lisa? Okay, let's move on to Jackie.
Pretty short.
Good evening, everyone. Um, okay, so I'll start off by our occupancy rate. We are at eighty nine point seven six percent. And we are unoccupied by ten point twenty two percent. That means we have nineteen units, um, that are open at this current time. However, there are good news. We have, um, six units of eleven that our guys can rehab that are already finished. Um, so we are looking to, I just sent another batch of applications this week with a deadline of twelve seventeen. So we should be receiving those back, so we should have plenty to sign on January first. Um, and then we have unexpected closeouts. Uh, excuse me, we had three unexpected move outs this time around. That's why we're so high. Um, and we do expect one to two move outs for this month. Uh, we're just waiting to get feedback from the family, so that will increase us quite a bit. Um, work orders are going perf- perfect right now. Um, I've actually inputted and that's why the sheet is taking so long. I've inputted all of the inspection work orders. Um, within the last month, we've closed out sixty of those work orders and we have seventy eight left. Um, eleven of those are non-inspections. Everything else is inspection work orders. Um, not as much as we had last year. I think last year we were at a hundred. Um, not as much as we had last year. I think last year we were at a hundred and six if I recall correctly. Um, so this year we're okay. Um, our applications are going pretty smoothly right now. We are at a hundred and fifteen. Um, and all of the annual letters were sent out as of yesterday. Um, everyone gets an update on an annual basis where they are in the number at this present time. And it also reminds of their, um, excuse me, them of their control number. And if anything changes, it's also on that letter. So they can also give us feedback if address, numbers, contact information has changed with any of their emergency contacts. So I send that out in writing. And then what I do is if you call me, that's how I know that you like to. If you don't call me, that's how I know you like to stay on that, on the list, on the list. And if you call me, then I know to remove you. So. Hopefully we don't see too many come back that wanna be removed, but we've had a couple since then. Our last application send out, I sent twelve, and out of twelve, we've only housed one. Um, just to kind of put that in reference. Um, our inspections were completed, excuse me, uh, late November. Um, and all of re-inspections will happen December sixteenth. We have sixteen units to return to. Um, and that's just, uh, kind of like going back to the decluttering, some of the things that were not where they were supposed to, making sure that it's safe in the apartment. Um, that doors are not being covered because that is a fire hazard. Um, so we're just gonna go back and re-inspect those sixteen units. And then I wanna give props on our maintenance team. They've had three units completed at the Congregate as well as two at the Village, and they have another two set up that are pretty quickly. And that's where we're at six, um, open for this month specifically. Um, and if you have questions, I'm okay to answer.
Not a question so much as kind of a concern. Those, your vacancy numbers are kind of real, I, I understand why. I mean, I, I know when people move out, what are you gonna do? But the numbers are not heading in the right direction at all. Um, they're really far worse than last month. So could you maybe put together something for us, um, you know, X, X number can be handled by our maintenance people?
Yeah, I have that number now. Eleven can be handled by our maintenance. Um, all the other ones, um, whether they're under the restoration project that we talked about at the last meeting or, um, harder units that if we had the money to have a contractor come in, we would really benefit in having that update. Um, but there are six out of the eleven are already ready for people to be housed in. So that just leaves, uh, what's the number?
Six.
Yeah, five, yeah. Five for our guys to rehab. Um, so that's what the plan is moving forward. And we've, I've already identified with Renee, which ones are the easiest to tackle, which is just to touch a paint, um, update the appliances or clean them out and things like that, or put a new floor down or a new toilet, whatever the case may be. So all of that is already, already written up for him and he has that. I can surely provide that for you all. But I also have it where it says what's under the restoration project and what's under, what's harder that would benefit from that contract.
Maybe tell them the reasons.
Oh, that's great. That's a great point. And Dawn also, uh, mentioned, uh, some of the reasons why we haven't been able to house people is, uh, the rent. Like they're coming in and they're, it's too small and they're coming from, you know, big houses, no, there's no storage for them. And then some people are just living off their social security and it isn't much and they cannot afford it. So out of the twelve, that's why I would like to put that into, um, perspective for you all. We were only able to house one. There's a potential that we still haven't interviewed, um, that we're gonna interview once Paula gets back. Um, that may be able to, but it's also based on his income. Um, so that's where we are right now.
And, and also I may add, um, the thing is some of the applicants that come through, they have no credit history. Um, they live with their family members and so therefore we cannot trust them to pay the rent on time because when they were family, they pay what they wanna pay. So when we tell them your rent is six twenty-five or six seventy-five, um, they look at us like, you know, there's no way they can do that because they live with family members and they pay what they want. So that's a, that's another, um, uh, variable as well. Uh, when it comes to not, um, applicants not accepting, um, to be housed here at Trumbull Housing.
So there are eleven units that if you are able to find appropriate tenants that could move in, I think is it by, like, January first?
Yeah. So what we have right now, because of the six units that we have available, we can quickly house six. Um, and then the plan is to work on those other five that won't take too much time to rehab, unless they run into an issue because I identify it's easy, but then they go and like try to fix or clean the toilet and then it comes off the floor because we had that happen last month and then up the toilet out, redo the floor, put a new flange, and then put a new toilet. And that was supposed to be an easy fit and that took like almost two weeks to complete, just in the bathroom alone. Um, but if there, those rehabs go smoothly, then yes, those are eleven new on the twenty that I just sent out. So I'm getting a little bit ahead of ourselves. Even though, because our tenant selection plan is very clear, once a unit is ready, an application gets sent out. I'm doing it a little bit, um, more now ahead of time. So we only have nineteen, so I took out twenty um, to applications to kind of get ahead because as soon as they come in, whether they don't afford it, they can't, they no longer want to, if the wait was too long. So then I can no longer house that person. So now we're down a person that we can possibly house. Yes.
Okay. But for right now, because we, you know, we're obviously we'll be meeting again in January, but for right now.
Six.
There, there's nothing you need from us in terms of funding anything?
No, no.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, uh, treasurer's report.
For the four-month period ended October thirty-first, the authority had an operating gain uh, before capital activity and depreciation of eighty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars, of which seventy-two thousand, seven sixty-five is attributable to Stern Village and twelve thousand, eight fifty-eight to Congregate. For Stern Village, operating results continue to include higher-than-budgeted vacancies with total net rental revenues not meeting the budget by eleven thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars. The only projected cost overrun continues to be the maintenance shop and equipment due to truck and tractor repairs earlier this year. For Congregate, the operating gain is ahead of the budgeted gain of five thousand dollars so far this year despite vacancies exceeding budgeted amounts by three thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars. Current vacancy rates will especially affect services as the year goes on. The only cost overrun is legal due to largely to Congregate lease modification work this year. At below, you can see the tenants' accounts receivable, the balances, um, with the number of people who are late in rent in both the Village and that, which actually comes down to two, uh, for the Village and none for Congregate. The overall cash position of the authority, including reserves, is eight hundred and forty-three thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars, including nineteen thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars of the SSHP development funds pending use for unit remodeling. Again, below is a snapshot, the synopsis of the program balances for both the, uh, Congregate and Stern Village. Then we have the schedule of operating cash activity, the cash flow for the Village and the Congregate. The cash position for each property is healthy due to positive operating results so far this year. In addition, Congregate received its quarterly subsidy this month, increasing cash approximately forty-five thousand dollars for subsidy provided in advance for November and December, two months. Further, Village now has nine thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars in surplus cash through October, which is likely to be spent during winter months, but management continues to monitor our cash balances. And that's it.
Okay, we do not have Jason here this evening, but are there any comments that anybody wants to make or? Okay, Laura, you're good. I know you asked Jason some questions earlier.
I'm, I'm actually going to take it up, um, offline. With, um, with staff.
Okay. All right. Okay.
Over line by line tonight.
I'm sorry?
What?
Go ahead, Paula.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Um, unfortunately, the Congregate had no hot water on Thanksgiving Day. And it was restored by A and B on Monday, December second. Um, so they needed parts, um, to fix the, for them to get hot water. Um, I did place that information on my weekly report, uh, rather than to disclose it on the meeting here. Uh, meeting with Barnum, um, as Ann mentioned, reference to the emergency and fire panels. Um, the crew started on Monday, December ninth to prepare for the project. I notified Nico, um, to come next week as they were getting closer to, um, finishing the project. I know they're gonna finish in January, but so Nico could, uh, instruct his, um, guards in case the, with the fire panels and with the emergency panels, so the guards would know what to do. Um, so he'll be coming, um, next week, um, on the eighteenth of this month. Uh, Markham is what's, was once called for our auditors. They have merged with CBIZ, better known as C-Biz dot com. Um, so that's a new audit. And like Dawn mentioned, we did well. Um, I'd like to thank, um, Dawn and Jackie for the help, um, with this running around everywhere, um, getting information for them. And I'd like to sincerely thank Dawn and Jackie, um, on December fifth. Um, Tri-City, um, let's go back. Um, Jackie, um, contacted another, um, vendor for the HVAC, um, as noted on last board meeting. Um, I contacted, um, Tyler HVAC is located in Stratford. Um, just for the maintenance for the year is twenty-three thousand dollars, um, just for the maintenance. I don't think that with Tri-City, they are more, um, indep- what they wanna do as opposed to, um, Tyler, um, HVAC. What I can do when I get back, um, or maybe Jackie can send the information to the board so they can compare, um, apples to apples with Tri-City and Tyler HVAC because they are charging twenty-three, yeah, twenty-three thousand as opposed to fifty-two thousand dollars a year. So, um, so it's Jackie, if you can, um, send that to the board tomorrow and let them know um, what Tyler HVAC will be covering. Um, let me see. The holiday party will be on December nineteenth at twelve noon. If you are available to, um, attend, that'd be great. Um, also Tom Kite, um, from Wind and Sentry is the person who would like to install the, the devices and the rooms for those who smoke, um, and also for the noise. Um, he is willing, if you would like, for him to explain his, um, his program in January. Um, and he said that if you would like for him to explain his, um, his program, he'd be more than, um, than likely to be on the Zoom. And I believe, yep, that is it. Yep, that's it.
Questions for Paula?
Um, Paula, in the last minute, you were gonna check other housing authorities about those, um, Sentry boxes?
Yes, um, the thing is, they, oh, they approved it with no problem. And he did say that for the residents who smoke in their units and, you know, they have, they really didn't want that to be done. But he said what you can do is, um, they, many of them have signed off stating that you can place the, um, the device in their units with no problem. Um, so he said that most of the, um, tenants have complied to place the, the device in their units to smokers with no problem. Now, I don't know what the tenants here would do, but the other tenants at the other places, they had no problems with it. Um, so that's another thing that we have to discuss. Um, like I said, the other places, they all, the tenants was fine, the smokers, they were fine to have the device installed in their units.
Okay. And how about the parking? That parking in the circle thing?
Um, that's still, um, a problem, uh, especially around the weekend, starting on Friday after four o'clock soon as we leave. So that is still an issue. I did, um, I emailed, um, the, um, to Trumbull Police, um, I forgot her name, the, I think it's Catherine? Yes, Catherine. And I referenced to the chief and I have not received any responses at all. Um, so, but something.
I will, I'll follow up on that.
All right, thank you. Because, um, that's still a problem. Even in the first circle, you know, we have little problems there. But the second, um, circle is, is really, um, something needs to be done about it.
The circle that's by the Congregate?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay. I'll follow up on that for you.
All right, thank you.
Was it Kathleen Oliver?
Yes, yes, yep.
Okay.
Uh-huh.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Okay.
Friday, December thirteenth. Uh, there's also gonna be a resident party here, a pizza party with, um, the men's club has, uh, donated gift cards to Stop and Shop. Uh, we're gonna have a raffle. And this is being paid for by, uh, the Activity Committee that was running different things this year. It takes the money at the end of the year and give it back to the residents and they seem to enjoy get-togethers parties, food. So we're having it on Fridays the thirteenth at noon. At noon.
I might eat well this month. Party, party, party.
Thanksgiving.
Okay, so we can move on to new business. Um, Laurel, you had asked that we put the THC insurance coverage of the commissioners into the minutes, into the record. So.
I have, I have, I have, um, actually a little challenge on this one. Um, um, Paula, I think you sent us the policy.
Right.
Problem is nowhere in the policy does it actually say Trumbull Housing Corporation. I, I, I triple, triple-checked because I just wasn't sure. So I think if you could, please get a certificate of insurance. There, there's already two in there, one for CHFA and I forget who's the other one, the state, I think. So there are already two additionally insured, um, individuals or not individuals, but you know, um, other companies that are already additionally insured. Um, we are actually a related company. THC was, um, founded for the express purpose of aiding THA. So though there is no legal, you know, um, in other words, the corporations are standalone, they are still related and that should get us close enough for them to actually cover us in writing, which they do not currently. I, at least I can't see it. So.
I, the thing is, I did explain to Derek, the HAI, our insurance company, and he sent me that. But what I can't do when I get back, I would, um, explain to him that we need a letter stating that. So I, I contact him.
It's actually, if he can just do a certificate of insurance.
Sure.
That's the legal form.
Uh-huh.
Bottom of the form, it'll say additionally insured Trumbull Housing Corporation. And it'll show the lim- um, the policies we're also covered under, which should be liability. Um, and director, directors and officers.
Okay.
In other words, we don't need workers comp or anything like that, but those, those two, um, certainly the liability and I, I think of my fellow commissioners will agree. We would like the DNO coverage for, um, THC.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, Kathy, if we could actually put that on the next, um, months. So, um, Kathy, if we could actually put that on the next, um, months. And while we're under new business, could I also ask you to consider, um, annual meeting? We're supposed to have an annual meeting for both THA and THC. Could the board agree to make it the January meeting? And we only need to like fit in probably the first five minutes or something could be THC. And I think all we would probably need to do is touch base again about officers. I don't think we need to really do anything else. And then we're legal for THC for another year.
And you said we need an annual meeting for THA?
Yeah, but I think if we could just do them both and it, and it would basically be, I think, um, we'd have to check the bylaws, but I think we would probably need to touch base again for officers.
Okay. Okay. So we'll make the January meeting, the annual THA meeting and the first five minutes of the meeting, the annual THC.
Right.
Everybody good? Everybody open to that?
I need a separate agenda then for THC or can I make it part of our meeting?
Uh, no, I'll, I'll send you one for THC.
Okay. Okay. All right, so then we've done the policies, old business. Um, where are we with our application for the emergency repair funding? Have we put that through or you were still waiting for those other, that other quote?
Okay, yes, I was waiting for the Tyler HVAC. Now that I have it, I will put everything together, uh, with the repair and the heat pumps, because that, that goes hand in hand. So I'll put that together, yep.
Okay, so Paulette, remember on that one, please, um, and Jason had said this at our meeting, our, um, one of our meetings, um, the, 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 the emergency grant for the state will not cover maintenance. It will only cover repair. So that portion of Tri-State where some of it was to flip those units correctly, that would be covered, but the cleaning will not be.
Right.
So you'll have to come back to us then if there's an overage. Um, and I'm guessing there will, although I'm not sure, I don't know what the other guy was in the budget for.
Um.
Cleaning, I don't know.
With, um, the thing is, with the emergency repair, you have up to five hundred thousand dollars. I don't think we should, would do that, but, um, there's always, you know, a challenge. But that's the, um, the threshold that we can use to do grant writing, which is great. But, um, reviewing all the paperwork for the, uh, repairing of the, of the units and also with the heat pump, because they go hand in hand, it doesn't even reach that amount of money.
Okay, beautiful.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so then the update. Excuse me, on the heat pump cleaning, you gave us before you were.
Yes, with the heat pump cleaning, um, that's with, being I have the last one, Tyler HVAC, now I could tie everything together.
Okay. All right, do we have an update at all on the lawsuit? Nothing?
No, nothing at all. He did say that, um, attorney Michael Leonie said it's gonna take a year or two years, um, for them because they're so backlog, um, so it's gonna take that long.
Okay.
Did they figure out the corporation problem that, you know, who they're, who they're coming back against?
Well, I took care of that with, um, Beecham Moses, um, I took care of that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the one with hoops and that they're off.
Okay, no, 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 um, that the people were, um, whatever, it's okay. Um, but, by the way, um, I discovered through Jason, because I had gone online to look to see, to get the DHA annual filing.
Mm-hmm.
THA does not do an annual filing, nor do they have to. We are formed as some kind of municipal crazy thing, I still don't know. And I've been on this thing for five years and I still don't know. So we, THA, just FYI, so other commissioners know, THA does not do an annual filing with the Secretary of the State, like every other corporation in Connecticut is supposed to do.
That's correct.
THC, because it is a little nonprofit, yes, we have to do an annual filing. And we did update the agent of service from a law firm in Hartford that started the corporation for us and doesn't know who we are.
Right.
So we amended that to Berchem. So if, if we get, actually get served for something, we have a chance of knowing about it.
Right.
Um, but I also, because I'm confused and I don't like to be confused about stuff like this, I asked Jason if for their January meeting, he could do a literally like a three-minute presentation to us about the actual corporate structure of THA, how we're actually structured, because we're municipality, but we're not, and we're a nonprofit, but we're not.
Mm-hmm.
But then what are we? Um, I mean, and I think it would be useful for staff to hear this too, because it's confusing. Um, and if it ever comes up and you're wondering what can we apply for and what can't we apply for and what's our status, it'd probably be good to know. And then THC, of course, is a standard, regular, non-for-profit.
Right.
Um, so that one's easy, but I thought it might be nice for him just to review how THA is actually structured.
Okay, anything else anybody wants to bring up under old business? We good? Okay, public comments, Bill, is there anybody still on?
Uh, yes, if there's any member of the public who would like to speak, please, uh, press the raise hand button or press star nine if you're on the phone. Okay, the phone caller may press star six to unmute.
Say again what they should press?
Uh, star six, they're unmuted now, so, um, the phone caller may speak.
Hello?
Hello?
Paulette?
Yes.
Oh, hi, this is Michelle in one sixty-six.
Yes, how are you?
Good, um, I just have a couple of questions, um. The first question, I caught the last part of it. Something about smoking and getting something to people's apartments.
Yes, yes.
Um, so then they're gonna let people smoke in their apartments?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Um, now. The only thing is that worries me is, um, it coming through to my apartment, say, we got somebody for Linda's apartment and they smoke.
Right.
That's where my oxygen tanks are and I couldn't be able to go to sleep if I have smoke coming through.
Right.
My apartment.
Mm-hmm.
So we're, we're not, Michelle, we're not, we're not allowing people to smoke.
No.
Yeah, no, people are still not gonna be able to smoke in their apartment.
Oh, okay.
These are detectors.
Right.
Oh, oh, okay, all right. I thought they were gonna let people smoke in their apartments as long as they had one of these for the smoke.
No, no, this is, this is to find people, this is to find people who are smoking in their apartment. Um, it's still, um, you cannot smoke, um, in your units, but some, um, tenants tend to smoke in their units, so this device would let us know, let the office know that they're smoking in the unit.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
That's, that's okay, that's okay.
And my next question is, um, about the insurance. I couldn't make it the day Ed was here because I had a, one of many doctor's appointments to go to.
Okay.
And, um, how would I find out about that? Would I call Ed and have him talk to me about it or?
Yes, yes, you call Ed, um, and let him know, um, you know, because there's so many changes, um, for two thousand twenty-five, so it's best to contact Ed and he will give you all the information. What he can do, when you call him, he can come and see you as, because it's, it's good to see face to face, a visual, because it's so much, uh, with this two thousand, two thousand twenty-five, the insurance and with the Medicare. So Ed, you just make appointment with Ed and he can come out and see you to discuss.
Okay, and also, there's one other thing.
Sure.
Oh, yeah, paperwork that we get from DSS, um, would be able to help us with that as long as we gave her enough time to help us with it, if we needed help with, um, you know, paperwork we get from DSS and we don't quite get some of the questions.
Okay, well, um, okay, now, do you have a care manager at Swakka?
Yes, but she never calls me. I've had paperwork and I had it for three weeks and I called her once a week for three weeks and she still hasn't called me back. So I sort of winged it and tried to do it myself and mailed it out. How right it was, I don't know, but.
Okay, the thing is, um, Samantha no longer has that role, um, at Swakka to see. So I don't know who the person is, maybe Lisa can, um, tell you who the person is, but, um.
Oh, no, her name is Michelle, I know that.
Her name is Michelle?
Yeah, her name is Michelle and I've called her and that three weeks I haven't gotten a call back, so I sort of did the best I could by myself and mailed it out.
Okay, but the best.
Swakka would be able to help me with that stuff?
Yes, the thing is, when it comes to your benefits, you know, it's the thing, it's, it's not best to tease yourself with that. If you're not sure about something, it's gonna cause a delay in your benefits. So if you need to come to the office or you need Lisa to come to you to get it done, besides calling, um, because more than likely with, um, with the new care manager, she's out in the field and maybe that's the reason why you can't reach her. But, but, or me, please, please call the office if you need help with that, um, with your DSS paperwork, okay?
Okay.
Okay, that's all I had. Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody.
You're welcome. Have a nice, nice evening.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Michelle.
Charlene, you're on.
Um, I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Seconded by?
I'll second.
Sarah. Unanimous consent, Barbara.
Charlene, we have it down again.
We have what?
We have it down again.
Okay.
Bill, thank you. Thank all of you and, uh, have a wonderful holiday season.
Yeah.
Yes.
Holidays, stay well and safe.
Yes, and I'm gonna look forward to my birthday now since I'm not gonna have. I'll let you know where I'm celebrating, probably be in my recliner. Everybody.